Sounds like a good time.
Yeah, all right, but this this place is I've got fourteen zones.
A big yard.
Oh, yeah.
Get a goat or something.
The first. Five, six months, remember? No. My first year in there, I was using one of our flower beds like four times.
Oh, really? She is.
And so it's pop up like there's no flower beds. It's like. We keep on.
That's it. I'm nearly starting with the water.
Bad.
So we're gonna do. But we don't need to. But we don't need to do.
And I consider you wrong. You, Commissioner Erwin.
Here.
Here, Irvine, before.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we are here right now for City of Madison Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Large Lot Industrial UGB Amendment Proposal. File number P A dash twenty four dash one. I'd like to note on the agenda that it mentions various staff reports and applicant testimonies. At the last meeting, we closed the public comment parting part of this meeting. So there will not be a section for comment at this time. All right, I get to read the plan statement as we open the hearing. This is the time and place set for the hearing on planning file number P A dash twenty four dash one. The hearing is now called the order. We will, we connect, excuse me, there isn't any testimony, so I'm gonna skip over that part. Commissioners must disclose any expert date contacts, including site visits, biases, or conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature and whether you intend to participate in these proceedings. Commissioner Reynolds?
Uh, we just have some Gary Harris regarding the farming. Just it is very not. Farm that he is one of the people that testified. Something that is well said.
Commissioner Reynolds, you do need to discuss or share the nature of that conversation.
Yes.
Your your disclosure, what you just said is not specific enough for your other commissioners to understand, so.
Yeah.
Maybe share with them the questions you asked and his general responses.
So basically, how long have you been here, like kind of farming did? How is, I learned about how his uh. Father was one of the original. People to bring water into this area. What he farms and then he was tired and we ended up conversation.
So was there anything specific to what is in front of us discussed?
No.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Kendall. Um, I haven't done. Commissioner Urban, I did have a brief conversation with actual editor yesterday over the phone. And all we did was discuss the agenda items that were going forward. We did not discuss anything related to how we feel about this proposal.
Yes, I talked with Commissioner Irvine and then just also um. Saying, like I said, just talking about the agenda for the meeting and that would be it.
All right, so is there anybody who wants to challenge any member of our body based on the expert date contacts, biases, or conflicts? Seeing none, we will move forward. All right, as I mentioned, we close the public hearing. We also, uh, which also means that the staff does not have to deliver a report. Although I have several questions to just kind of summarize where we have been over the last several meetings. So related to that, I just wanted to ask in general to staff. Um, if you could just. Remind us again in big picture strokes, what are the particular parameters that allow this particular action? This specific um expansion related to a specific lot? Uh, what are the parameters for that decision?
Sure, and just a point of clarification, the record was closed. And so what I'm going to share with you this evening is based on the record. The information is considered in the re- record, letters uh, then submitted and of course the oral uh testimony provided prior hearings. Uh, and that is also what you're to rely upon for your decision. Uh, generally speaking. Urban growth boundaries in the state of Oregon can only be amended when there's a need. Okay? And. Cities are required to have a twenty year land supply after the urban growth boundary is is a twenty year land supply. Uh, we have residential land needs, so we all of our residential zoning, uh, land zoned residential meets that twenty year land supply. Same with our employment lands. That's a industrial and commercially zone there. What is before you is a large lot industrial. You ever wrote down a re expansion proposal and the proposed site nine. Meets has been found to meet the need. For that regional need. There is a regional study completed in two thousand twelve. It was approved by D L C D. Uh, and I I would also note that uh. Um, when when it was adopted, a thousand friends of Oregon's challenged that. And you shoot the count of a thousand friends of Oregon did settle and agree upon it and now it's in administrative rule. And it is law that you can make language decisions as if you are being contemplated this evening. So. The large lot industrial land need is separate from our other commercial and industrial land. The. Regional needs analysis identifies the criteria for these large industrial sites. In that it does say. The type of land you want, the the acreage, the slope, and the the other characteristics. So we use those characteristics to go out and find suitable sites. Before we actually found those suitable sites, we had to set up a study area as identified in in the findings. And under the rule. If you cannot find a suitable site, meaning that means all the criteria in the regional needs analysis. In your urban reserve area. Then you move on to a study area that's one and a half mile beyond cities existing urban real boundary. Then you go through the priority one, two, three, and four lands. To figure out where you find a suitable site first in priority one land. If you can't find land in priority one land, then you go to priority two. You can't find suitable site in priority two, then you go on to three. And then you go on to four and five, so on and so forth. In this particular case, we did not find a suitable site in priority one, two, or three lands. Remember. Part of the program is that property owners have to be willing to participate. One, they're not agreeing not to subdivide their land to parcels less than fifty acres. Two, they agreed to only use that land for industrial, large lot industrial purposes. In other words, they're not gonna bring in and develop homes on it. And then um. Three, they're gonna make it available at a reasonable market price for for these ten years. As a, as shown in in the last public hearing, my presentation identified several property owners and said, we do not want to be be considered. And so testimony that was provided to you said, we need to consider, for example, site four. Well, the owner said, of course, that I don't want to be part of this program. So that site was not ultimately considered. So that's what forced us down to the priority four man. And under the law. If you cannot find a suitable site in part of one, two, or three lands, then you look to part of four and five, which is the irrigated uh farming. Okay? That's where we're at. That's how we've come to this point, based on the law. We follow the analysis exactly to the letter of the law, understanding that there would be issues with the elements. Chair today, a few questions.
Yes, thank you. I think that helps pick the framework. So the next step then would be to just to uh have you follow up on what factors make site nine the selected site?
Thank you, and I'll just summarily kind of refer to my presentation I gave the last point in commission. Uh, and and that presentation really compared site nine to site eight because there was uh testimony that wanted uh. The commissions to consider site eight. The the challenge with site eight. Is that has less developable land. Than site nine. It has a road that goes through it and also has the irrigation command. Remember, this is a an analysis, a research effort to find the best land available. Because you bring in land that is not as developable, it's gonna have higher development costs or not as likely to be developed. And therefore, you're not going to have land to meet your intended need. And in this case, it's for the large lot industrial. Jefferson County just your release, uh, their their tax rule. The eighth largest taxpayer in Jefferson County is Denver Truck North America. That is the first large lot industrial site in central Oregon in a matter of G P B. So we want to use these lands to find a site that can be most easily developed, so we can bring jobs and industry to our community. Any sort of additional barrier or cost makes it that much more difficult.
Thank you. Um, so from what I'm understanding is that there are these specific parameters. That you were allowed to conduct this analysis. Then there are specific criteria in which you identified need uh or the city did, and then identified this site that met this criteria. So in our job to review it, review this, we have looked at the record, we've looked at the evidence, we've asked questions. Um. However, the city has come up with a specific site, uh, site nine. So if we were to make any other type of um. Recommendation for a different site, that site doesn't would not have the criteria met that is listed in this proposal.
Chair, I I would say a little bit differently, and I think what I'll I'll say what I think you mean to say. O R S one ninety seven eight dot two eighty five. And Oregon Administrative Rule six fifty, division twenty four, subsection sixty seven. Have specific requirements for how cities go about finding suitable sites and land to meet a a land need for urban growth boundary. We followed that. So the city did not. Say site nine is the site per se. We've only come to that conclusion after going through the objective analysis. It is required by statute and the administrative rule that I just referenced. The find factually based findings have been developed that support that. I would tell you that if you want to bring in a different site. I don't think there's going to be factual evidence to support that. In other words, the presentation I gave the planning commission on October eight. Comparing and contrasting the challenges between eight and nine and the opportunities. If you flip your findings around, you're gonna have likely challenges saying from other people, why didn't you choose site nine because it has lower costs? I don't know if you can objectively make findings. That will stand the 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 uh N L P. Okay? Um, this is a a factually based exercise here. This is not something that we've just cooked up. Um, so that's what I think you you wanted to say. You can say right or wrong, but there is just a criteria. We need to factually demonstrate that we've met that criteria. And if we were to change from site nine to site eight. Uh, my my concern would be we would have problems justifying that.
Um, so at this time, I would like the other counselors or commissioners to be able to talk about what they're thinking, any questions that they have for staff. So I'm just gonna call on each commissioner individually to ask questions or to kind of talk about what they're thinking. Because this is our time to build um an idea of where we're going this evening. So um, Commissioner Reynolds, if you would like going first.
My question, questions regards to how, what, I guess, what utility companies supply the power to a diner?
It's the power.
Power and and this. Um. Large lot officials talk about C E C. Central electric.
Site nine, it would be sure by C E C.
Uh, they have. In the report from Brent ten talks, it said there's a one megawatt load that is available now and upgrades will allow for a two megawatt. Uh, I've heard that. So. How much power does that two megawatts allow for to be developed? I mean. For instance, what's uh, how much power is right?
Two and a half megawatts.
Two and a half. And it sits on how many acres?
Oh, I I don't know. It's one of the largest industrial landowners.
How about, okay, so let's go back to diamonds. Uh, how how much power does that take?
Not at all.
Not.
I mean, you're running your light lights in your shop. They have, they do run their electric uh electric trucks that they they charge, right? But they don't use a a big number at all. Definitely less than one megawatt.
Okay, so the, so two megawatts if they operate. If it's central electrical upgrade, it's correct. Then I, and that's.
You're sharing that. I have not heard that.
Uh, this was in a letter from.
Okay, I I don't recall that letter exactly, but if it's in the letter, then then yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I think Brent ten boss from C E C off of that water. Um, so. A pump station, you know, how much load that would take if we were to put in.
Not not much at all.
Like one point one megawatts or anything like that, that doesn't.
It maybe requires three phase power, so it, I mean, it's. You know, the equivalent of maybe two homes.
Um. Let's, let's, I guess, play a game, let's say it does take one point one megawatts for a pump station or something of this site to have. Uh. Utilities like sewer to this property. Um. That leaves what nine hundred kilowatts left on that transmission line available for, well, right?
Under the assumption that. Under the assumption that. We start with this station takes. A megawatt, which uh like. I I dealt with many of these in my career. They don't. If a fraction of that, like it's like two homes.
Okay, well, I would like to know how much of. Before I do forward, how much?
Chair, I'm sure you're relative with with due respect.
Yes.
The record's closed, so I I understand you're asking for this information, but you do need to make. Uh base your decision based on the information that you do have.
The information that I do have says a pump station for this site would take one point one megawatts.
Where are you getting that information?
From uh public works director, Jeff.
Hey, I guess Commissioner Reynolds, my question to you just in discussion is. If we're talking about current power loads and we had a person who was actually applying for a. Um. A use permitter actually comes to us with a proposal. Then it's the applicant's job at that point to figure out what the load should be. Um, what upgrades seem to happen on that property. So I guess I don't see how our role here this evening is to determine. What the appropriate electrical power connection is when we are. We are talking more about is this property allowed to be brought into the system? With the idea that the end user, whoever would purchase this, would have to do those type of calculations then. I'm not sure. That our burden is to figure out. The exact capability or.
No, I, and I understand. I'm just saying that. The there's a restraint. Uh, with this property as far as power that's available. And wouldn't it be beneficial that? There it's put on a utility grid that. Possibly. Could be upgraded. More than. The two megawatts that. Or the one megawatt that's currently there. I mean, we're looking, we're looking to expand. Our U G B a one time expansion. And we're picking this site. Because right now is the best available. Is the, you know. Um. I don't feel like this. One time expansion should be used on. Uh, what we have available, even though this is the best available. Um. Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay, can I comment on that?
Uh, so I wanna also pipe in here real quick.
Yeah.
Um. Your legal counsel, city attorneys advising, your questions need to be related. The question to to evidence in the record. Okay?
Okay.
So please, please stick to that.
Okay. Where's the?
Process online.
Okay. So that's, what what did I violate?
Well, the i- it's just a a good opportunity to 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 provide a reminder that because the record's closed. Your questions can be about. What is in the record? Questions asking for somebody to add new information outside of the record. Are are not appropriate at this time because of. The record being closed and, you know, the response could be. I I can't comment on that because it requires introduction of new evidence.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the. One megawatt of power being supplied by C E C is in the record.
Correct.
And the upgrade of. Infrastructure by C E C could allow. For two megawatts that is in the record. Um. The unknown is the load needed to. But in a conversation. Yeah, or something else. Uh, the letter from Chip Light is in the record. Correct? Okay. And uh. Gives a layout of what type of power, how much power is needed by. A day is an inch. This site would be unusable for. So. I'm just saying that. Electricity that is provided at this site is. Not optimal for this site to be allowed into U G.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Can I share Kendall? Commissioner Ed.
Oh, man, um. This has been a hard one, sure. I've. Done a lot of reading on this and talking. And it's never gonna be the right spot in our small little town. It's just not. It's always gonna make. Someone upset where it's gonna be, but our town also needs to grow and. Grow in the right way. And we're talking about lot nine. We're not talking about eight or other lots. And I feel like it does meet the criteria where it's at. Um, going. Towards the east doesn't make sense to me. Um, there's slopes. Um, B Street doesn't. Have the capacity to. Right street, right B street, the main one that goes to middle school. You already have a college and schools and I just can't see something going up there. I think this. Lot is good where it's at. It's near the airport. It's in the industrial area. My family's business is in the industrial area. I won't see more manufacturing coming to my address. That's that's just how I feel. And so I'm. I'm making a recommendation to the city council for lot nine. That's my thoughts.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Um, I don't know if that's in the format that it needs to be in.
I think we just need to clarify. Uh, Chair, Commissioner Ed. Um, you said you wanted to make your recommendation to the city council for site nine.
Yes.
Normally you say, uh, I would like to move. So i- is that a mo- a notion?
Yes, sorry about that. I would like to move to make the recommendation to city council. Um, to approve the proposed urban growth boundary.
I believe. That we would need a second and then we can discuss. We don't have to immediately to a vote vote. So if there's anybody who'd like to make a second, we can move to discussion before vote. Is there a second? So we have to make a second before I can make my comment? Yes. No? Okay, so why don't we hold that motion then and move on to your comments? Thank you.
Um, my comments are, I agree with our commissioner that. This is a really tough choice and growth in. Any city is difficult. Um, but I want to commend the city I met with Nick. And all the evidence that has been presented, the analysis that has been done. I do not believe that this was done carelessly. I believe it was done with a lot of due diligence. In trying to stay within state laws of agricultural land. Being not the first choice. Um, trying to find those different priorities of lands. And going down the ladder and um I directly asked um. Nick about us making sure that we stayed within the state laws so that we're not violating um. Farmland. Careless. I have a very high respect for all kinds of different um. Businesses and. And farming and ranching is one of them. Um. And so I don't want it. Taken lightly that we just grab a land and forget about. Doing our due diligence. Um, and so I do, I have to do that for myself, for my own conscience sake. And I truly do believe that the city has. Um, given opportunities to the people here as well as. Um. Taking every step possible to do it the right way. Um, and so far I have not found human error. Doesn't mean that there couldn't be. But I really do believe that they have tried their very, very best to make sure. That it was done in the best way possible so that we. Were left with. This is really truly the. Best choice. Um, so in saying that. Um. I just want to thank everybody for everything that they have. Input in, but I also want to thank the city. For their very hard work in trying to do it the right way.
Thank you, Commissioner Kendall. Um. As far as my input, I would agree with Commissioner Kendall. I think that this is a tough decision, um but. The site that has been proposed meets all of the criteria. Um, the other site that was mentioned, uh, site eight. Has some real detriments to it. And this is some of us. Uh. Using this large lot expansion is something that is unique and it cannot be used again. Uh. So. I think that we do need to use the best site to make this decision and um. I do believe that with all of the information that we have, that site nine is the best possible site. Without knowing exactly what would go in there, who would use it, what the power uh supply will be. Five, ten years from now, um but things will look like. This is kind of a chance for us to. Add on to our map and see what can come um. As proposals. Come our way, we will then get to review it from a site review, master planning, um analysis. Which will, I think, allow us to really look at it from a different set of eyes uh with different criteria. Um, so I do believe that this proposal in front of us meets the criteria that is set forth um. Uh, in order for us to um. Bring. Site nine into U G. Are there any more comments?
So, Commissioner, I again. We get one time to do this. Um, we are going with again what's available. And I understand that we are going. In a path that. What is available and this is the best that's available. Again, we get one time to 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 use this. And to to, yes, this is the optimal choice. For what is available. At this point, at this time, I under, I do, I understand that. I'm just saying that. This is our one chance to expand U G B. For. This large lot industrial. And it's a shame and. It's. How I feel is on the wrong target. It is. And. That is, I think. A huge impact to. What could be optimal. So. That's, that's what I'm saying. And um, yeah, move forward.
Question to you next. Um, uh, Commissioner Kendall. You had said that, and correct me if I'm wrong, in our meeting, that. As a city, we could only go out so far. We can't. Go out ten miles and say, oh, here's the optimal. How is red? Here's the optimal land. And it's ten miles out of the city limits. Is that correct? We, by the standard of the state or the county or whoever, the powers that be. Allow us to only go out so far from our. Boundary lines now. Is that correct?
That is correct and and just so. Um, everyone knows what I'm basing my response on. Uh, page twenty five of. The four hundred and eighty eight page packet or page thirteen in the findings. Identifies. Oregon administrative rule six sixty, division twenty four, subsection sixty five.
You need to get a little closer to the mic too.
I'm sorry. And so this particular administrative rule identifies that we need to look first in urban reserves under subsection A and then B. Um. Uh. That we are uh a city less than ten thousand, so we need to look uh within one and a half mile. For urban growth boundary. Yes, that is correct. I'm not making that up. That is. That is law that we need to base our decision on.
So. Is. We don't have a lot of other choices. To go out further to change even um. Electric company. You know, say, I would probably want it in Pacific Powers area. If that isn't a mile away, I'm sure that was taken into account. Is that correct?
Well, I I wouldn't say that's exactly correct, but I would. See it a little differently. Within one and a half mile of the urban growth boundary. We found the sites. That meet the area requirements that are in Pacific Powers territory. Some of them had slopes that exceeded. Five percent. Even seven percent. Or cheaper. Some of those sites, the property owners did not want to be considered. For this.
So we got limited that way.
Yes, so. I- 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 in a certain way to summarize it, you were selecting a site based on multiple factors. Not every single one of those factors. Can mean that. You you know, because you're looking for transportation sewer or power, slope. Property owner, uh, you know, opt in and 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 things like that. So. That's why. Some people are looking at the map and the old, you know, maybe, uh, for example, site four, that means you look, well. Mister Peterson off the map. So he's he's in with the power. He needs the slope requirements. But he's also opting out.
Okay. Different question. If we were to wait. When do we have the next opportunity? And when circumstances be different, I mean, when we have another opportunity to say, we're gonna search for. A large lot. What's our windows?
Well, great question because it's been said uh this evening a couple of times that this is our one opportunity. That's actually not true. So under the program, the regional economic opportunities analysis for the for the large lot industrial in Central Oregon. Um, and it's it's identified here in. It's uh. Uh. Page number two on the findings, it identifies. Exhibit two on page two, there's a table. The one to two hundred acre sites. The number jurisdictions, pardon, the number of sites is two, so I mean, two sites. If you move one hundred to two hundred, the first site was a diner site. The program identifies that after a site is developed and committed, then we can replenish. So. Under the needs analysis today, that is true. We are also going through uh uh where you're looking at updating this needs analysis. To figure out if the need remains the same or is different in the future. So it may change. Okay? Um, so it isn't your only opportunity. I won't get into the detail of the law, but but there may be opportunities in the future. And I will tell you that you're gonna need to go through the same analysis if if. The rules are in place today because the legislature changed it from, you know, year to year, but largely they're not gonna change a whole lot.
My question sort of is a little bit different than your answer. If we were to say, okay, let's put a hold on all of this. We would have to address this issue to try to get a large lot again. Five years down the road, two years down the road. Six years down the road. Is there a timeframe that says you have to pick? Um, your need, yes, you need a large lot, but you've only got five years to do it in.
Not exactly. A- as long as there's still one site remaining based on people two there that that still can be uh. Um, utilized in the regional need, you could pursue a a large lot industrial site.
We have those.
Yes, that's a diner site, diner truck north of. Yes, right. So if you don't move forward on the U G B expansion today. At some point in the future, you can you can. Yes, right. So if you don't move forward on the U G B expansion today, at some point in the future, you can, you can, you could go and make the same proposal.
Okay, I mean, so we don't have one, because Dino's already taken our last one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking this is if we were to wait five years down the road, it doesn't mean that circumstances are going to change. Our city's not going to grow in other ways that would make it eat, okay? If we're limited to a mile past our boundaries, the boundaries of the city in the next five, even ten years is probably not going to multiply that much where the outer boundary moving in a mile is going to give us a whole bunch of other options and sites. Is that correct?
I, I, I believe that is correct. And, and the reason for that is we, we've in two thousand twenty-two completed our housing capacity analysis. We have four times the amount of residential land supply than we need for a full year with a supply. It's really hard based on our population growth and employment projections to justify any additional employment land. In two thousand and seventeen, the city adopted a new E O A, your new Bull Island Analysis. That's, that's your factor basis for that. So I, I don't believe that's going to change.
So our boundaries will probably be very similar, even if we waited another X number of years to make this decision. Okay, thank you.
Okay. But these, it's not a matter of the boundary standing, it's a matter of broken city. Once we get that ten thousand population limit, we get to expand our local area, correct?
In the circumstances, if you're looking at U G B expansion with greater than ten thousand, the rules exist as they, they exist today, yes, we would have a different study area.
Yeah, we'd have a different study area. So once we hit, and, yeah, yeah, so.
So ten thousand gives us?
No, ten thousand gives, yeah, ten thousand would give us a larger local area.
Instead of just a mile out. Okay, where are we at population by now? Sorry, don't know that.
Well, I think the last better was eight thousand thirty-three or?
What's the forecasted growth per measures?
I, I, I don't know that number. Okay, that's on.
So we're like, do you know how far out, do you know how far out after we get ten thousand, the boundaries would go? If that's part of the record of you to ask that question?
We'll go one mile as, as identified in section, subsection B there.
Only go one mile out?
Correct.
Even after ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Page twenty-five, right? We go back to page twenty-five. I think it's a mile and a half of the same. One and a half, one and a half, one and one half. For cities with U G P populations equal to, so it wasn't saying another half a mile.
And.
Yeah, I like that.
With half a mile, they, they give their.
And you could, you could sort of rid of ten thousand, one mile of exception areas. And that's how you know this was an exception area, correct? This was an exception area?
No, we, we do not have any suitable sites in the exception.
So, okay, so we don't have any suitable sites in the exception areas, so one mile beyond U G E is where we're at.
That's, that is your study area. Within that, we need to look at urban reserve areas, exceptional lands, where you go in priority three.
With half a mile addition, give us different sites?
I, I cannot answer that. We, we.
Yeah, that goes a far beyond my thought.
Again, you, you stuck to the letter of the law, right? So anything beyond that would be just pure subject.
This is Commissioner Eder. And just go back two weeks ago to Ms. Sartre's presentation that he talks about how many people are leaving the community for jobs. What if we could bring those jobs here? You know, instead of people having to travel and be on the highway and have, you know, and get to that, that point where people can live here and work here.
That's very good. That would be a different analysis, finding out what kind of jobs they're leaving for. And I, what, what, what the, again, you would have to look at, you know, yeah, what they're leaving for and what kind of jobs they earn, you know, is, is it something that could be here in the near future? I mean, that's, yeah, jobs would be, you know, or people would be.
Yes.
You know, people are also coming in. There is a thing called about that actual jobs. Yeah, we have a negative outflow of jobs working out, bringing in industrial center, how many does that involve? Having this can allow somebody to develop. How many, again, how many does diner employ, how many people, you know?
I don't know the latest point of that. It's somewhere around forty?
Forty, okay. And we were losing three thousand net loss, so. And even some of them, yeah. And so depending on what's put in.
So I think, so I think again, focusing on whether or not what's in front of us right now meets the criteria, like we are ready to make a recommendation. If there are more comments, um, take those or actually had a motion on the table, so if somebody is ready to make a second, we can do that or, um, there. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
There's a second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion regarding this motion? All right, then we will take a vote. Um, all of those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed, are any opposed?
Uh, nay.
We have, Kushner Reynolds is opposed. We, the motion carries. All right. All right, so, thank you, everybody, for talking through that and dealing with that. And so the second item on our agenda is related. This is the City of Madras Large Lot Industrial Zone Change Proposal, File Number Z C dash twenty-four dash one. I am opening the public hearing for this. I will now read the statement, is that correct, Nick?
That is correct. Please, please go through your conference adjutant.
Great, okay. So we are going to go through the conflicts of interest. Commissioners must disclose any experted contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest. Commissioner, have anything to disclose? And in so, be safe in nature and whether you attend to participate in these proceedings?
Commissioner Kendall, I have none.
Mr. Reynolds, no.
Commissioner Eder, I have none. Commissioner Urban, I have none. Does any party wish to challenge any member of the hearing's body based on experted contacts, biases, or conflicts? Okay, this, also, just as a reminder, this is a public hearing. We delayed the public hearing for this, so there will be opportunities for testimony for the applicant testimony, proponent testimony, neutral testimony, and opponent testimony. At this time, though, we are going to hear from staff.
Okay. So now that you've made a decision on urban growth boundary, this actually gets a lot simpler. So the decision before you, uh, this evening, is whether or not to rezone the land that you just decided to bring into urban growth boundary and change it to city large lot industrial. As I identified in the, the staff report, the current zoning is E F U A one county zoning. And again, the proposed zoning would be City of Madras Large Lot Industrial. And that is, to explain this in a little more detail, that, that large lot industrial zone just wasn't thought up overnight. It was, it was created almost exactly from the regional needs analysis and where the permitted uses are just that in the needs now. So it's industrial uses in that, so large lot industrial uses. When, when you change the zoning of the property, you, you then again, also need to review compliance with the city's comprehensive plan policies. The findings in, in the, the packet identify that, that the proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan policies. We have also analyzed the applicable statewide planning goals. Those findings are in the, the staff report or the findings as well. And again, I've found no problem or no conflicts with the statewide planning goals. There is one that usually comes up when you rezone land, and that is the transportation planning rule as identified in Organ Administrative Rule six sixty, Division twelve, so, Section sixty. And that requires the transportation system to be analyzed to make sure that the proposed land use regulation change, including zone change, will not significantly affect the system. And you recall at the first hearing that I did report that the applicant did hire Peddleson Associates to prepare traffic impact analysis with the transportation plan rule analysis included in that. That was reviewed with the Oregon Department of Transportation Region Four staff. Their staff identified some changes. They weren't comfortable with not knowing the exact use, not knowing the exact trip generation. So they suggested that we put a trip cap on the, this site. Okay, it's, it'll be site nine, just to use consistent terms. The trip cap is four hundred trips per day, so that would be, you know, total two hundred cars coming to that site and leaving every day. Okay? Now, could there be more transportation, trip, for traffic trips generated? Potentially, but number one, that will be reviewed at the site plan review level. And another trip, traffic impact analysis will be prepared. And if they exceeded the trip cap, they would again have to do a T P R analysis. And if it was found that facility, transportation facilities were impacted and needed mitigation, they would be required to mitigate that. Those are fancy terms for if an intersection needs to be improved, they would need to improve that intersection. If a street needs to be widened, they would need to widen that street, things of that nature. So that's what that analysis does. Okay, so I know there's been some concern, identifying the record that, you know, four hundred trips is a lot. Certainly more than much there today. However, I, I do want to be clear and transparent that if there is additional trips, there's plenty of regulatory mechanisms in place to make sure that the transportation system will, uh, will, is adequate to meet the needs of the developer. So it's a long way of saying, T P R analysis has been completed. We've reviewed it with ODOT. They are okay with the trip cap on this as well. And so we have findings to support the requirement to the transportation plan rule analysis has been satisfied. So with that, staff's also recommending that you make a recommendation to the city council to approve the zone change as proposed. With that, I'll pause there for any questions before you proceed on with public comments.
So when we go through the zone change, I know that this Site Nine properties are currently owned by the county, but if it was a private taxpayer who had agreed to do this particular U G B expansion, from my understanding, the realis, the underlying real estate taxes do not change until the use of the property changes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So even though we would be making a zoning change, the people who are working on this area or who have a lease for this property are not impacted by this zone change today?
Correct. They can still farm the land. We have land inside the urban growth boundary and city limits today. There are two sides of this. It's been rezoned. Right, the U G B annex, all the things you're thinking of this evening or comfortably this evening. Yes, that is all possible.
Okay, with the change to, with this property being now would be if the, and the county approve it, is there an urban, where you, uh, renewal district that this property would then be subject to?
No.
Thank you.
And it's not proposed to be brought into any urban renewal district.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for staff on this change? And does staff have anything else?
No.
Okay, so seeing that staff has done, and we are done asking questions with staff, do we have any applicant testimony? I guess that would be from county.
Reporting, Chair of County Board of Commissioners, just like the city applicant is in favor of this. Especially after your previous.
Jefferson County District of Officers, same thing.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
Can I ask about the last meeting? How, like, basically the county approved site, how, how does that conflict? Like, can I ask that?
I will, I will generally respond to that, but probably need to have a conversation after the meeting.
Okay.
My commission can make any recommendation it wants.
Correct.
To their respective elected officials. Okay, under, under the Urban Growth Area Management Agreement between Jefferson County and City of Madras for Urban Growth Boundary Amendments, the city council and the board of commissioners do need to come to the same conclusion on the urban growth boundary.
I understand.
So, so the Jefferson County Planning Commission may have made a recommendation that's different than what you, the planning commission made this evening. But it is the city council and the board of commissioners to make then a decision that is consistent with each other.
Correct. That's the conflict that I had, was the recommendation that the county planning commission made to the board of commissioners.
Yep.
In fact, that, for, that's what I was wondering is the, I guess, the bearing on the decision that would be made at the commissioner level?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that would be my question. Yes, would that be, how much weight would that county planning commission recommendation be taken at the commissioner level? Once I'm speaking to him.
Could, could I answer that? I'm not a board commissioner, but, but sooner they are going to hold a hearing.
Can I ask?
You can ask them anything you want.
So that would be my question to Wayne. It's totally, I, I guess, I, I want to make it clear that the hearing that the county will go through will be on November thirteenth. That'll be a quasi judicial hearing.
Yes.
So I would suggest that those questions would be brought to the court at that time. This is a so many decision for the city hiring commissions. No, you, correct. But since I can ask this question, that's what I would like to ask you, is what kind of weight does a recommendation from the county planning commission have on your decision?
On your decision?
On your decision.
I have another. Talk about the decision that's in front of you, not a decision that's in front of another body, another issue. Yeah. You know, I'm going to refrain from that question till the hearing time, because I got to make a decision on it at that time, but.
Okay.
Kushner Reynolds, let me answer a little differently.
Sure.
They're going to look at the same record.
Yes.
So they're going to get a recommend, staff's going to present a recommendation to board commissioner saying, this is what they recommended to you. Here's the record that, that, that exists that, that, uh, for that recommendation. Then we're going to go through the same process as you.
And also if, if we make the recommendation to city council and city council and the planning, the county commission make a decision that doesn't change the U G B, then whatever we are voting on this evening also would become moved, would, would be, would not stand.
Yes, it's quite impressive.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any proponent that's? Do we have any proponent that's positive or affirmative testimony? Anyone online? Do we have any neutral testimony from anyone here or online? And do we have any rebuttal test or excuse me, opponent testimony? Anyone online either?
I think they're working on it.
I don't know if Michelle Varley online is trying to unmute herself. Ri- Michelle, is, can you give us an indication if you're trying to uh, make a comment?
Okay, we'll get Michelle just a second to confirm whether or not she wants to talk. If you can give us a thumbs up if you wanna talk, or uh, and okay if you are not talking.
It maybe that she's actually writing or texting on her phone.
Okay. Okay, so if Michelle decides later she'd like to talk, we can let her talk. Um, is there any rebuttal testimony, anything else? All right. Are we shy? State your name and your address.
Susan, Susan Rask, thirty twenty Northwest Dogwood Men. This industrial zoning. We ended doing measure thirty seven and forty nine. To get anything changed for us. And then state the county and just change in zoning they want. All right. Better program. I know you're gonna do whatever you wanna do anyway, so. This makes me angry that we have to jump through all the moves. And then you can do whatever you want.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank goodness, I couldn't figure out how to unmute. Um, yeah, this is Michelle, uh, Michelle Varley, I own uh, twenty five twenty Northwest Dogwood Lane with my husband Mike. And um, I, you know, you guys have heard from me before, um. But you know, uh, there's still like, I, I don't understand still, I mean, all the reports and everything say site nine's the best location. But um, there's a lot of stuff that came up at the last meeting that I know that it's been brought up about, you know, you don't have the power, you don't have the water, you don't have the sewer, and all this is gonna be out in, you know, future, future land, way out there floating around somewhere. Um, but you know, once you change this zoning, i- it's a ten year commitment, and I don't really, I mean, is it really a possibility that you're gonna find someone who's gonna put in millions and millions and millions of dollars to develop this site? I, I mean, there's so many negatives. Is, does anyone, I mean, has this been done before where they've, they've built substations and, you know, everything that's gonna be needed for this to actually be developed? And, and also about the traffic mitigation, I brought this up during the last meeting, um. The, the road, you know, turning Dogwood into a collector street, I really don't think that's sufficient to mitigate, uh, you know, when you, when these are buildings are fully employed. Um, I think there's gonna be issues with, you know, the existing residences and uh, farming on adjacent properties, and we have a lot of semi trucks pulling hay trailers down Dogwood to get on highway twenty six. A collector street's gonna be a nuisance to them, and um, I also don't think it's gonna be sufficient to mitigate, so I'm, I'm wondering, can more information, can somebody tell me? Like, what is the foresight for getting traffic from twenty six to site nine with the airstripping in the way, and, and I know there was some kind of public statement about selling the airport, which sounded really strange to me. Um, I don't, it just seems like we're putting the cart before the horse, I, I'm, I'm just concerned that if you pick this site, it's a, it's a commitment for ten years, and we don't really even know what we're doing. I mean, it is, it sounds that way to me, anyway, there's, there's a lot of negatives to trying to put farm ground into large lot industrial, there's just, you know, the, the north unit expenses, that's like a million bucks and a two year commitment to to pipe them. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff that hasn't been answered, in my opinion.
Thank you, Michelle. Nick, I don't know if you wanna comment on me about.
The traffic impact analysis in the record identifies that the transportation system is adequate at this time. When the site is actually proposed for actual development, they will need to submit a TIA as well. And we will check then, uh, under, largely the same analysis for traffic to make sure that the transportation system, including city, county, and state transportation facilities are adequate. Um. I think that's really where, where my answers stop.
Okay, um, I think too, um, Michelle was speaking about specifics, and I just wanted to verify with you, Nick, that um, this is not a specific proposal, this is a idea of allowing this property to be used at some point. That is why it doesn't, it is not clear how many people, what type of electricity, what type of um, property it will be, how many people it will be employed, and unfortunately, in the planning world, this is what you deal with, that is more of a very gray area where you are putting ideas out there and seeing what sticks, is that is that correct to, to say that, that's why we don't have the details?
Yes, we do not have a developer at this time, so we don't know the precise use. If you approve the zoning, and the city council does as well, the large lot industrial uh, development standards would apply, and in that zone, we have specific uses that are identified in the zone, and those are largely trade sector, you know, manufacturing type, you know, uh, uses there. So we don't know which one of those permitted uses that, the permitted uses within the zone would ultimately be developed there. Uh, for, for sixteen years, I've been trying to get land developed at the airport. Depending on the project, we either don't have the sewer, we don't have the water, we don't have the power, we don't have the transportation. All of them vary, it's just, you know, every, we call them leads, uh, every lead is different. Um, and so, you know, it, it's a, this is a higher level planning analysis, the urban growth boundary expansion. Once you zone it, you're saying it's gonna be generally for this purpose. In other words, um, you brought in the UGB for a large lot industrial need, you're not gonna zone it residential, that wouldn't be good. You're gonna zone it large lot industrial. Then, then you're going to put that site out there, people are gonna um, see that it's, you know, in the urban growth boundary, zoned and in the city limits as well. That will bring attraction, from there, we will talk, start talking with people about um, the utilities, the uses, all that sort of stuff um, on the site. So, I mean, acknowledge every site has limitations, I mean, that's real estate. I, I don't know to what extent this site, um, how could, how quickly it would need to evolve, right, that's, that's really a market driven endeavor, but, but I think, one uh, economic development for Central Oregon or, or uh, chief executive officer uh, has chaired the staff that there's multiple leads. Um, and there's lots of interest in matters throughout Central Oregon for trade sector development. Uh, we would like to capture some of that, so to the extent that this site meets those needs, we're going to market and try to, try to get that site developed. Yes, this is not something we wanna wait on, we, we want the site developed as soon as possible. Yeah, um, but the, the actual use, uh, don't know. The traffic, there's gonna be another analysis on that, making sure that uh, traffic is addressed. Uh, the irrigation, um, the district uh, did say in the preceding hearing uh, on October eighth, that hiking the canal is not required. That canal is in federal easement, as long as you stay outside the federal easement and don't impact that facility, they can do that. We have a, uh, an existing international company on the Andrews Drive today, it is adjacent to a canal. They built there and have existed for over fifteen years. It is possible.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else for testimony? Seeing none, I believe that we can make a motion to close the public hearing if somebody's wanting to do that, and then we can deliberate ourselves. Um, Commissioner Kendall, I make a motion to close the public hearing. I have a first and a second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing today? Uh, I'm, all are in favor, the public hearing is closed. All right, now we get to move on to planning commission deliberation, do any of you have any questions of staff at this point?
I have one, whoever does come in and develop, and this is regarding uh, Michelle, I mean, the, the infrastructure costs is going to be somewhat put on them as far as development studies, those kind of things, so uh, regardless of what goes in. They're going to bear the brunt of the, the cost of improving that land.
Yes, it is policy, the city that development needs to pay its way.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
It is, I like to say somewhat casually, y- you know, uh, Dorothy Burgess in downtown Madras, God bless her, you know, she, she's not subsidizing the infrastructure for new development, the rate payers can't do that, we don't have the financing to do that. Developer of the site will need to do that. Uh, the city, there's several examples of the city getting state grants and loans to buy down the cost of those infrastructure improvements, we will do that again, the city and county as, as long as the county owns it, will work cooperatively to, to do that as well, we've been successful on it, so that, that helps address that challenge to the developer, but ultimately, it's the developer's responsibility to make sure that the uh, adequate infrastructure serves the site.
Any other questions with staff? Is there any deliberation that needs to happen? Anybody wanna say kind of what they're thinking, or go ahead and make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend that city council to approve the proposal change for lots to better down the staff analysis.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds, do you have a second?
This is Commissioner Heather, I will second that motion.
All right, I have a first and a second, do we have any discretion? All right, all those in favor say aye. I, I all have voted in favor. Motion passes, all right. Moving on to item number three, we have the city of Madras Large Lot Industrial Animation Proposal. This hearing is now called to order. Let's see, this is also a public hearing, um. The, there will be opportunities for staff to present a report, the applicant will present information, we will also take uh, um, testimony in the informative, neutral, and opponent's. Um, I am going to read our um, conflict of interest statement. Commissioners must disclose any expedited contact, including sites, expenses, or conflicts of interest. If any commissioner have any of them disclosed, and if so, please state the nature and whether you intend to participate in these programs competing. Our Commissioner Kendall, have you none? Commissioner Heather and Russell.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Commissioner Urban, I have none. I'll pick you this, um. Does anybody here want to challenge that? But we don't have any conflicts of interest? Okay, seeing none, I do want to, uh, Commissioner Kendall has asked for a five minute recess. So uh, we will take a quick five minute recess and come back at seven fifty-ish.
Yeah, so people could adjust.
I have that muted when you send it.
Oh, yes.
Right, it looks like we are back. Ready to continue the meeting, so we have just finished reading the, um. Conflict of interest statement. And now we will move on to the staff report.
Uh, thank you, before we move on to the, the staff report for the annexation, we'd want to. Acknowledge the fact that Nikki Killingsworth did put in the chat that she would like the opportunity to speak. Uh, in opposition to the plan amendment. And just wanted to report to Nikki that the planning commission did take formal action to make a recommendation. The city council this evening, so if she would like to speak on the matter. Before the city council, she can do that on the city council's public hearing on November twelfth. At five thirty PM. Here in the council chambers and city hall. Uh, with regard to the, uh, annexation proposal. Again, this is all kind of part and parcel, same property is the urban growth boundary expansion, the zone change, if you, you just took formal action on. This is now, uh, the proposal to be bringing in the city limits. Um, and, and again, um, we only get to do this when, A, the property is in the UGB, or there's a. Uh, a reasonable likelihood that it will be, and the zone change, uh, accordingly. Getting back to, uh, infrastructure, this is another. Step in the process where we analyze, uh, whether there's adequate infrastructure for the site. Um, and. What we require now for annexations. Is that people that like their property, we broaden the city limits, we execute an annexation agreement with that. And again, that, that's a formal agreement that we. This, the city and the, uh, applicant identify the obligations for infrastructure improvements. Uh, under certain times or under certain conditions. Okay, uh, these annexation agreements can be extremely complex. In this case, it's, it's really not, because we don't know the actual development on the site. And we don't know when that's going to happen. So, if you don't know what and when, you al, you also can't require, you know, certain improvements as well. So the annexation agreement has been drafted in a very. On a high generic level, and it identifies that the, the applicant in Jefferson County or their heirs and successors. Being if they were to sell away in. Uh, this obligation or agreement would transfer to them, and they would be responsible for. Uh, bringing the necessary infrastructure to the site so that it can be served. Um, the city, uh, staff and, uh. Uh, I think the county staff have come to a tentative agreement on this. Uh, we, we, we agree on the terms. So we are, uh, including the annexation agreement in this, uh, proposal. And so if you prove the annexation, uh, uh, you, you need to know the annexation agreement would be a part of that, so that would be a binding obligation of the, the applicant. With that. Uh, the site don't want to overlook this, but remember, you, you can only annex land that's adjacent to your existence in limits, or it is. Uh, adjacent to the existence in limits, you're not using right-of-way or anything like that, so this is. Um, uh, adjacent and, and to. The property owner has requested this annexation, so this isn't an annexation, the city is forcing upon the property owner, they've requested as well, so. Uh, we're working cooperatively on that regard. Very minor, but, but also very significant, uh, component of, uh, legal requirements there. Uh, it's, it's really just that, so, uh, any questions you may have for staff?
Questions for staff? Okay, then we can move on to applicant testimony, if the applicant would like to say anything. You're getting your stuff then.
Wayne Fordring, Chair, Detective County Commission, uh, we are in favor of this. Like, one or with that. General Assistant County Administrative Officer, her agreement to, to the annexation.
Thank you, any questions? To applicants? Thank you. All right, do you have any opponent testimony, that's anybody in favor? Do we have any neutral testimony? Do we have any opponent testimony? Anyone online want to speak?
If you want to note that someone by the name of Clifford Reynolds online has her hand raised, I'm not sure. That actually, actually it does. You know, he, he found a way to, uh, be in two places at once, graduated on that, but, but, just, just be clear, I think that's in there, but.
Oh, gosh, well, that's the first time. All right, so it doesn't look like we have any testimony. So if I can, you know.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm, I, I just see, I see Nikki, she keeps continually trying to. Get something said, but she can't get her phone off mute, I don't think. Uh, Nikki, are, are you there?
Get my phone off mute, that's not the problem, the problem is. The county, the city planner told me I wa, I couldn't testify till November twelfth, which makes no sense. When the chair and the agenda both say I can testify, so I would like, first of all, clarification on that.
Excuse me, um, Mickey, this is, um, Commissioner Urban. We are currently talking about annexation. Of the property. That we voted on earlier to bring into the UGB, or that we voted to recommend to the commission. Or city council to bring into the urban growth boundary, so if you want to comment specifically on the annexation proposal, you are welcome to do that.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
For the record, I am Mickey Killingsworth, seven nine eight Southeast Dover Lane, I represent Jefferson County Farm Bureau. I, um, think. That you guys have moved forward. And, um, there's several issues. And, uh, one of them is whether it was legislative or quasi judicial. And you've been moving forward as if it's legislative. And I brought that up the first time I testified. And I'm bringing it up again. I think you need to realize what the. County Planning Commission did in their deliberation. And, uh, take that in note. And, um. I was not notified, this was a set meeting, you set the date. But also, I had a letter that said at the same time, or at six PM today, there was a meeting over at the Board of Commissioners. I went over there to testify, finally talked to Jeff after pounding on the door. And found out that meeting had been changed without any notification to me. But I think you need to review. I know you're moving forward. But there's a lot of ramifications that's going to happen if you continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mickey. The city council will be reviewing this again, so you do have another opportunity to participate in that meeting. Um, as well as the public hearing of the commissioners. Nick, I can't remember the exact dates for those that are coming up.
November twelfth is the city at five thirty or something, November thirteenth, I think, is the county board of commissioners' hearing.
Great, so.
According to Jeff.
I would recommend you attending those or, uh, writing a letter for those.
Oh, uh, I guarantee you, we will be putting stuff in the record, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other comments? Do you have any rebuttal? Applicant? Okay, thank you, okay, so now we have heard from the public. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Commissioner Edger, and I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kendall, I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 all are in favor, the public hearing is now closed. Does the commission have any questions for SAG at this time? Do you have anything to deliberate? Okay, then, uh, please make a motion if you'd like.
Well, I'll, I'll move that the planning commission make a recommendation to the city council to deny the proposed annexation based on planning.
Can you say that again?
I move that the planning commission make a recommendation to city council to deny the proposed annexation based on the planning.
So, your motion is to deny?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second? Seeing none, is there a different motion?
This is Commissioner Edger, now make a motion, um. To approve. To the city council. The annex into file number A X dash twenty-four dash one.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Kendall, I second the motion.
I have a first and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, that's three ayes, any opposed? We've got one name from Commissioner Reynolds, motion carries. All right. I want to say thank you commissioners for sticking through these very tough meetings the last couple of weeks, this is. Definitely the hardest that I've done, the hardest. Decision that we've made since I've been on here, and it's been almost six years, I think, so that's pretty crazy. Um, Nick, do we have any additional discussion or agenda, uh, next meeting against the discussed?
November sixth.
Yeah, we, we do have a public hearing. But mark your calendars. Yes, next meeting will be November sixth, six thirty PM. You have a what?
Do we have an agenda on that?
Uh, yeah, it's a conditional use proposal. A conditional use proposal? Yes.
Great. Any other, anything else from commissioners? All right, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh five PM.